We're live. Okay. Everybody ready? All right. Good morning, everybody. We're going to start with the pledge this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair notes that the quorum is present and this special session of the Marshall County Council for August 29th, 2024 will come to order. We've got just a couple of things on the agenda this morning. First, we've got a request for support for some maintenance items at the jail. And who do we have presenting on that this morning? Sheriff. Good morning. If you guys could please state your name and titles for the record.
Matthew Hassel, Sheriff.
John Greer, Jail Maintenance Supervisor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're here. Our 2025 plan was to replace the rooftop unit over the administrative side of the jail. I had put it in my budget for 2025. I didn't know the cost at the time. And but then we've got some issues that suddenly jumped up that we need to make a quicker decision on. So I'll let John take it from here and let you know what has happened.
Okay, so you have a couple of papers in front of you. And the top one with the quote for the proposal for 144,800 is for the old Freon unit. And what I mean by that, if we don't order this unit by September 6th, we cannot order this style unit anymore. They're switching to a new Freon. So if we did that, the new Freon, we would be the first guinea pig for the new Freon. It's like buying the first year car model. I don't think that's a good idea. The Freon that we currently have, that this unit would be, is they're all the same. So we have 10 rooftop units at the jail. They will all have the 410A or 410A. That Freon is going to be available till 2037. So it's not like I just. And if you notice, the other proposal is for 163. That's what the new unit costs because it has higher electrical requirements. The conduit has to be bigger. It's just and the conduit to that unit goes in the ground. So if we buy this older unit, it's a direct fit. And we don't have to change anything electrically. I mean, I just think it makes sense for the money to do it that way.
Yes, we've got a savings of about $18,600 to go with the older style right here.
Right.
You're recommending the 144,800, is that what you're recommending?
Well, we need to leave some for the.
Electrical, not electrical, the controls and the fire controls. We're responsible for that. So it's typically 8,000 to 10,000 more than that.
Now, in my budget, I did ask for 250, 250,000 because I had no idea what the amount we're looking at because this is a really huge unit. I think it has four condensers in it.
Yes, four compressors.
Compressors.
And the one, just so you guys know, the one we're using now has two compressors at work. And the, yes, you can replace them, but the, we have a leak on, major leak on one that it doesn't do any good to replace the compressor. And if you saw the mess of copper inside of that where it could be leaking, it's a mess. I mean, it needs to be replaced, so.
But likewise, you guys have not approved the 2025 budget. That's why I'm here before you today. And also, you can reduce that amount to maybe 160,000. That will cover the controllers along with the quote if you want to move forward.
You have 250 budgeted. There's some other items, in your line items that could go toward it too. So I'll make a motion to make a sign of support for the sheriff to get the ball rolling. The invoice is going to be paid next year, correct?
It will be paid in 2025, but it will be ordered probably today if you show your support.
Today because it has to be ordered before 9/6.
Okay, so my motion is to show a sign of support for a purchase of this unit up to $160,000 total cost. He has a $250,000 budget for next year. It's a sign of support. That's my motion.
A second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon and a second by Mrs. Cox to give a sign of support to the sheriff for $160,000 for the purchase of a rooftop AC unit. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. When these, when this old unit is, where does the money go to for scrapping? Does that come back into the county or does that?
So that's part of the removal of the old unit is part of their quote. So.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? All right, hearing done. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion is agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Claus, did you, or did you have something else, Sheriff?
We, I sent out an email explaining the cloud to you as part of our maintenance package for our database that we use for jail records, police records, and CAD, Computer Aided Dispatch. The reason I'm here again is it's. I'll have some people come up here and explain the cloud to you. It's supposed to be a safer, more secure way to store your data. Plus, it's going to do other, there's other issues that it's going to address if we go with it. The problem is, is the startup cost right now is $25,000. They would like to have the agreement signed by the commissioners by the end of this month. And but the downfall is, is in 2026, this is going to raise our maintenance, annual maintenance fees by $45,000. So I want to bring it to you. Is this something you're willing to support or is this something we should just not proceed with? So I'm going to ask, Mike Marshall is the one that brought it to me first. So let him explain a little bit about it so that you understand what we're working with.
Hi, y'all. Most of you are aware, the Budget Finance Committee in particular, that I have been pushing for the last several years as your IT Director to move toward cloud storage for security reasons. I have tried to figure out a way we can isolate Dispatch and the jail as their own entities. And it's really not physically possible, given our network layout. What I'm worried about is the amount of data, whether it's prisoner information, whether it's Dispatch, or whatever, that can be locked up by a single click. So, yes, it costs us, we now host our tax data in the cloud, our KAMA. What is that? Computer Aided Mass Appraisal in the cloud, our finances. And so I would like to move Dispatch and jail records into the cloud. What that means is, yes, somebody can click and lock up the machines in Dispatch, which is its own pain, but they can't destroy the data. It'd be there. The second side of that coin is we allow a lot of VPNs into the jail. We've done it as securely as we possibly can, but that's still outside traffic coming into our network, even though it's isolated. I don't like it. And so by moving it to the cloud with multi-factor authentication, the VPNs go away. The risk of having those servers locked up goes away. And it makes our officers, and I don't want to speak for you, Jordan, they're able to access their CAD and their records anywhere at any time without having to come through the VPN and coming back into the county. Does that about sum it up?
Yeah.
So we'd be looking at an initial startup cost of $25,000. And then that annual $45,000 number, is that a total annually or is that an increase annually?
Oh, that's an increase, I believe. There are so many numbers going back and forth. We will be one of only three counties doing this. So we will be testing this. But they're giving a substantial discount. I don't remember how much. Jordan, you're better with numbers than I am.
I don't remember what the numbers were, but it was.
It would increase by $98,155.86 if we don't do the upgrade now. The upgrade now, like I said, in 2026, will cost us $44,710 on our maintenance, annual maintenance agreement, which I said 45,000 earlier. That's about, that's what it would do. There is also, in this, in this package, there is also where citizens can file their own police report from their computer at home if they so choose to. It makes it more accessible for our community. If they do have an issue and they want to get it reported, then they can do that too. That's just part of this package deal. But the bulk of the deal is the cloud, the storage and eliminating the VPNs.
Mr. Harmon.
Well, help me out with the financing side. So the 25,000, you're looking for a startup cost this year, right?
Yeah, I have 25,000 now, but I'm not willing to go forward with this unless the council understands that we're looking at a 44,000 and some odd change at two years from now when we do our maintenance agreement.
Two years from now, so not next year, but in '26?
Next year is going to be 123, 364, 14. That will be next year's cost.
Question. Is that only pertaining to your branch of the county government, just to the police department? Or Michael, where are we going to be as far as all the other data being secured within this?
I'm working on that. That has been my long-term goal. But right now, what we're discussing, this cost is just for CAD and jail records.
That's what I thought.
It's a process. It's not easy.
Because at some point, the rest of the government's going to have to come up to that level.
That's my plan.
Yes.
If the commissioners and the council agree that, yeah, we're going to suck it up and pay a little more and then we can get it out of here where it's safer. Can it still be breached? Absolutely. But not as easily with an email click.
Well, recently, we've been able, when we've been getting online, we've not been able to get on the GIS website or the Beacon site for some reason. And we don't know what that.
I've already sent a message off to the GIS coordinator about that. And I'll circle back with her as soon as I get upstairs. We'll figure out what's going on.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So Matt, I want to understand the finances again. So we have a $25,000 startup fee. And then you said next year it would be 123,364. And then moving forward in two years, then it would just be a $45,000 maintenance fee. Is that all of the investment that we're looking at to get set up?
That's the addition. So the 2026 estimated maintenance fee would be $168,750.
Wow.
Okay, so that's the total, but it's about $45,000 more than what we're currently paying.
Correct.
Okay.
That's why I'm bringing it before you.
Okay, I just wanted to understand it thoroughly.
It is expensive.
So it's roughly a 25% increase over our existing cost?
Okay.
About, yeah.
Okay. All right, any further questions from the council, Mr. Faustich?
Quick question. Ultimately, will it be the same company handling all of our cloud needs if we transition over? Is everything going up to the cloud?
It is all done through Central Square. This is the agreement.
There are support people now. They're the ones who provide the servers. And when Jordan has a problem, you know, he's the one who calls them. It's the same company. It's just all's we're doing is getting it off our land and into the cloud.
Okay, so we're going to be dealing with one entity?
Yes.
Even countywide, when, if you were able to migrate up to a cloud?
Yeah.
Okay.
But not countywide. Sorry, I don't want to.
Okay, not countywide.
We have different vendors for different applications. Our finances is through Harris. Our KAMA and tax is through Exoft. There's not one unifying company that's doing this. And when I'm, I'm working on GIS now, which will be Schneider. Which, I just heard that. I know, we'll get it fixed.
Well, you know, not to literally beat a dead horse, but when you go online and you look at the data and it's not complete, you know, somebody's paying a fee somewhere to have that being complete.
We'll get it figured out.
Appreciate it.
All right. Any further questions from the council? And so you guys are just looking for a motion of support at this time?
Correct. If you've got the money, that's great. Otherwise, we have to do an additional. But this is where we're going. This is the direction I want to take the county as we move forward. So, yeah, we really need the council's support in this.
I just want to add too, I said it on one of your meetings, and there's been other counties that's been breached.
They're all around us.
And locked down. So it's, yeah, it's something that we need to be proactive in.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon and a second by Mr. Faustich to support the request. Is there any discussion?
Sure. Coming in the 2026 year, there should be ample amount of money to cover that $45,000 increase. It's an important part of what we do and it's not a heavy lift. So I think money coming forward, whether it's out of the special lit or whether it's out of a general fund in your budget, Mike, it can be, it can be found. So I wholeheartedly support the request.
Thank you. I feel this is really important.
And I know $45,000 sounds like a lot, but if it's just a 25% increase over what we're already paying, I think it's worth it, so. Any further discussion?
All right.
All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion's agreed to.
Thank you, folks.
Appreciate it for having the special meeting. We were just, we're in a time crunch. I really appreciate you doing this.
My pleasure. I don't think he, I think he's moved things around. Is that where he wants it? So, all right, so what we've got next on the agenda, part of the reason Mr. Harmon asked me to call this meeting was that he had been approached by some folks who are looking to present Ready Grants and to get some support from the county on that. So, good morning.
Good morning.
And if you could, please state your name and title for the record and for those folks at home.
Absolutely. My name is Jeff Huiyan. I'm the Plymouth City Attorney. And I'll be introducing the presentation this morning. You'll be hearing from several other members of the groups that have put these projects together. So you'll get some individual perspective on each one. I want to start by thanking you for giving us this opportunity and hearing what we have to present to you. We're pretty excited about it and we hope that you will be as well. I also want to recognize that there are several people in attendance this morning. Some of them will be speaking to you individually. Each one of these individuals actually represents a much larger group that has been working on these projects. We had quite a few people who wanted to be here that just weren't available this morning and many others on the teams that have been part of the process. It feels like it's been a mad scramble over the last couple of months, getting ready for the submission deadline, which is tomorrow. But in reality, these projects represent many months and in some cases, years of time and effort and thought and dedication by community members who care deeply about their communities and are actively involved in planning for the future of Marshall County. So we're excited to show you what we have this morning and we think you'll be impressed as well. I'm going to start, you advancing the slides or do I have the? I want to start by giving an overview of the opportunity that Ready has to offer. I'm sure all of you have heard of Ready, the Regional Economic Acceleration and Development Initiative. If you are familiar with Ready, one, that was a way for, it was a program by the state of Indiana to leverage ARPA funds across the state to create regional transformative projects, including significant private investments. It was so successful that the Indiana Legislature decided to dedicate $250 million to a Ready 2.0, another round of Ready funding. And our region, which consists, it's the St., it's the South Bend, Elkhart region, but it consists of St. Joseph, Elkhart, and Marshall Counties. We were awarded the maximum $45 million to distribute for projects throughout the region. On top of that, the Lilly Foundation has committed $250 million of their money to be divided up, 185 million for blight elimination projects across the state and $65 million for arts and culture projects. Those will be statewide. The Ready money will be distributed directly by our Regional Development Authority within our three-county region. We also have an advantage in Marshall County because the state has made a commitment to dedicating 25% of the funding for rural communities. And within our region, Marshall County is the only rural county. Now, that's not a requirement. They're not simply going to say Marshall County gets 25% of the money. We still have to present quality projects and show them that we can use it effectively. But it at least gives them an incentive to allocate a significant portion of the money to Marshall County projects. And we believe that our projects are very high quality and are worthy of that award. Just a basic overview of how the grant works. It's approximately a 20/20/60 split. There are some nuances to it, but Ready funding can be applied for up to 20% of the total project budget. Those Ready funds have to be matched one-to-one by local public funds. And then the concept is for private funding to be 60% of the projects. Now, there can be some variation. Public money can be more than 20%. We don't have to ask for the full 20% of the project for Ready, but essentially it works out to about a 20/20/60 split. And again, the reason we're here today is because the project submission deadline is tomorrow. And we, like I said, we've been scrambling to put these projects together. And I think that will show in the presentations how much work has gone into them. And just an overview of the projects we'll be presenting today, they span the county. Bremen Growth Project is a housing project that also includes recreational facilities, specifically for the school corporation, and a town-wide trail system connecting the community. The Culver Community Youth Center will construct a new facility for the Culver youth organization that used to be the Boys and Girls Club to expand their space and allow them to expand their programming. Habitat for Humanity in Marshall County is joint forces with Habitat for Humanity in St. Joseph and Elkhart Counties to do a region-wide housing application that will result in additional housing units in Plymouth. The Heartland Arts Center plans to renovate the historic Montgomery Ward Building in downtown Plymouth and transform it into a regional arts hub. The Plymouth Housing Project will add a diverse collection of housing types, as well as some mixed-use construction to help alleviate some of the housing demand in the city. And the Culver Exchange will renovate the old Exchange Bank building in downtown Culver to create a mixed-use facility, additional housing units, as well as commercial space as a catalyst for downtown development. We'd like to give you more detail about each of these projects. And I'm going to ask champions of each project to come up and explain them. First will be Tony Wagner to speak about the Bremen Growth Project.
Good morning, Mr. Wagner. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Tony Wagner. I'm the town attorney. I'm joined today by Keith Frain, our Director of Operations, and Brian Main, our Park System Superintendent. We have been working on this Ready Grant since, oh, I think the spring of last year. So this is about 18 months' worth of work coming to fruition for us. So if I can move the slides, yep. So just to give you an idea of what we were looking at when we started this process, and some of these numbers, I guess, we knew they were a problem and they've gotten worse. I think there were three houses listed for sale in the Bremen-German Township area at one point. I know I've seen one of Erica Lehman's signs out on Berkey Street, but that's literally about it. We don't have enough housing and we also don't have the type of housing that our population is looking for. We have folks that are aging in place in their homes, looking for lower maintenance housing like condos. Don't have that. So we also haven't had a new housing development in Bremen in 20 years. There's one that's still kind of in progress that gets a couple of houses built out a year. But that's all we have. Our schools, in district, student population is declining. They are papering over that with transfers coming in. We currently have about 166 open industrial positions in the town. And Southwars Project is not done and fully online, which will add another 200 more jobs. If you saw the South Bend Tribune, I think, yesterday, there are 1,500 jobs coming to St. Joe County. And it's reasonable to assume some of those folks would come from Marshall County. So obviously, there's just a huge demand for housing. The primary objectives there that are listed, we are trying to, with our application, add amenities to the community that will help spur housing and more development. I know it says that we're talking about a trail and a recreation center, but those are actually features that are built in and around new housing developments that are actually planned. So we are trying to use this project to also address needs that the town has, needs that the school has. We have collaboration from our town council, our redevelopment commission, our park board, and our school board. We have private developers involved. We basically got all aspects of the town coming together to put this project forward. So the most exciting thing is that we've used this as an opportunity for some master planning and actually decide where is the town going, probably like past the point of my lifetime. Where will we see expansion in the future? And we're really unlocking that potential. So essentially, we have three phases, although I will tell you there'll be a little flexibility the further down you go. The first phase, though, calls for a $62.5 million estimated investment. That involves the Bremen-Greenway Trail. We'll get into that here in a moment. It is a little bit easier to visualize. There are five infill housing projects that are part of this, an estimated 135 units. It also involves the construction of the Bremen Community Recreation Center. Phase two is a different site, estimated 72 units. The property owner there, though, we're not sure that they necessarily will move forward. Before, we would want to get to the property that's identified in phase three. Phase three calls for a minimum of 250 units. I saw a design that crammed 308 into the same space. So there's some flexibility there. The interesting thing is that's a space that is actually going to be controlled by the redevelopment commission. So our operating theory is to let private development go first to the extent that they want to. And then when we see basically how that's gone and what kind of needs are still available, we will start to work on the project that the municipality controls. So flipping to the master plan, if you're familiar with Bremen at all, I think you might grasp the scope of this. Essentially, if you look at the yellow line there, kind of the top part, right underneath Plymouth Street, that is the Pines building. Plymouth Street, that is the pines building essentially at our West Park. The Greenway Trail will run south along the Yellow River, cut to the east. That large green property is the Phase 3 property that's controlled by the redevelopment commission. It'll continue east, cut up north to the school, so that they'll be a part of it. It'll come further east and eventually end at the existing trail system at the James Park area, Sunnyside Park. So we've got essentially, I would say probably 80% of this trail actually locked down in terms of its property that we have an interest in already, or we are having easement granted or are promised to grant the easement. So we're pretty excited about this. In terms of the housing projects or developments themselves, the orange is part of Phase 1. We actually have one of those projects moving forward already, because the demand for housing was so great, they couldn't wait. You'll see some residential TIFs in these areas, and the interesting thing is they are utilizing park properties. Those residential TIFs are set up in areas where you don't have big infrastructure costs. The infrastructure's already up to the property line, and we're going to use those residential TIF funds to actually support the improvements of the park, which benefits the school, because most of their athletic fields are actually down in our park system. So there's kind of a stripped-down map of just the Greenway Trail. Again, you can see where it goes. The plan currently is for an eight-foot-wide trail, I think. A lot of that is just kind of proof of concept at this point. We expect it to be kind of different widths, I think, in different areas, depending on what the need is and where the area is. And then finally, the Bremen Community Recreational Center. You can see the details there, estimated 25,000 square feet. This probably wouldn't start until '26. We have some concern about what maybe, what direction costs are moving in between now and then. The building is proposed to be scalable, where it could be expanded in the future. This is a partnership between the school and the community. It'll be operated by the schools. We felt very strongly that it needed to be operated by the school for security purposes. But essentially, off-school hours, there'll be community access for essentially the walking and some of the other athletic facilities. I think when the pickleball folks find out, there'll be indoor pickleball. This will be the most important thing we've ever done. So essentially, though, what we tried to do was get this type of building in a position where the community could use it, but the school can actually use it to meet some of the space needs and conflicts that they have right now. Again, this is a proposed design and location. Some of this is still changing based on the school really evaluating what their needs are, but we have a pretty good idea that this would, this would work, so.
Tony, that's going in the practice football field? Is that where that is?
Right now, but to be honest, it's been talked about putting it over in the Link area by the swimming pool. And there's a couple sites where it's been discussed. We're really trying to make sure we're putting it in the most effective place for the school to be able to utilize it as well, while still allowing that community access without creating any security issues.
Just curious.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I have to say, for those who are not familiar with the challenge that Bremen has had over the past number of years to find places for new residential properties, this is very exciting. I don't want to ask you how in the world you actually were able to get access to property.
Well, it involved a lot of collaboration between the four bodies that we discussed. This is a big win for our park system. To be honest, they were very enthusiastic. I do want to call out John Pfeifer, and anybody from Bremen knows, you know, what John's role in the community is, and John has entered into an agreement with us to have these things go forward, and we're still working on helping him hopefully develop some of his properties for housing. So it really touches all corners of the community to get this thing together, and I think that's what the READY group hopefully will be happy to see.
Yeah, that's awesome.
All right, thanks.
Good morning. If you ladies could please state your names and titles for the record, please.
I'm Mary Bowlin, the Director of the Culver Youth Club.
And Karen Schuman, Culver Community School Corporation Superintendent.
Okay, so presented in front of you is our mission statement for the Culver Youth Club, and we're just going to proceed. So who we are is, we're essentially an after-school program that is from after-school until 6:00 PM to provide services for children elementary school age, as well as our sixth graders in the middle school. And then, we also provide a 40-day summer program for students in the neighboring communities of Culver, so in the Knox area, Bremen, Rochester, Plymouth surrounding areas, so that they're having a safe and secure environment, that they can also flourish and have various activities that they're going to be engaging in, to keep them stimulated throughout the summertime, as well as in our after-school program. And just giving them a reliable space that maybe they don't have, as we are in a, maybe, you know, a lower area of where we have people who can't afford to have their kids at home, as well as working their full-time jobs. So giving them a space that's onsite, where they can be engaging in different activities, such as games, arts and crafts, different things like that, so they're really giving stimulating activities outside of school as well. We are currently at full capacity in the location that we use now, which is in the school itself. We have two classrooms, as well as access to the gymnasium, one is not being used by the school itself and the cafeteria. So currently, our enrollment for the past two years has increased exponentially. In 2021, in that summer, it was about 30 kids averaging of enrollment, and in 2023 and 2024, we averaged between 60 and 70 kids. And that was just for our summer program and for our school-year program. We have had an enrollment over 100, and even including this school year, we are about at 100. So that definitely maxes out our area that we currently use, especially during the wintertime when we don't have access to the outside areas. We're really limited in our space that we can use to run our different rotations and get these kids the activities that they need for that three-hour period, and then during the summertime for our all-day camp. Okay, so Karen, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
So why is it important? Mary's already talked about the spaces within our elementary school. We would also like to provide daycare for more families within our school community. If you're not aware, Culver Community surrounds four counties, and we serve four counties, and we bus students at 5:30 from the youth center so that it doesn't impede families. So part of the transportation within our school system is also providing that four-year-olds and up are transported to school, which is a great benefit to the workforce. Along with that, so we have currently a daycare inside our schools also that supports our teachers and staff. It is a self-funding daycare. We provide the space, utilities, and maintenance of the program, same thing that we do for the youth club. We provide the space, maintenance, and utilities for that program. As the Dunes Project comes into play here in Culver, that's 300 potential doors within the next four years, we know that that elementary space and that other daycare space is going to be needed within our school corporation. And at the same time, we'd like to expand the amount of seats that we have available for childcare and for the youth program after-school and in the summer. So currently, they have about 3,600 feet that they could, or square feet they can use, but that is also shared with our after-school sports in the winter, all those things that go on in schools. So for them to have a designated space outside adjacent to our elementary school, we're going to lease the land so that they can build this building at a cheaper cost, so they don't have to purchase a spot, and it's adjacent to the school. And it'll give them a total of three different classrooms, a warming kitchen, a full-size gym with a walking track that will house the daycare during the school hours, and we're going to focus on offering that for teachers and staff, both of the academies and any other surrounding school. The reason for teachers and staff is because we offer the summer program, so it kind of has to be adjacent to the current hours that are within teachers' programming throughout the school day, and then to have it available during the summer. So we're hoping that it expands to provide for more teachers and staff and make it affordable to them, which then makes their salaries go farther as a teacher.
And this is super influential for us, because our goal, especially leading up into the next few years, is to increase our population, the amount of people that we're able to service. So in order to do that, we can't really do that in the certain facility that we're at right now. So having that extra space and having that ability to be, you know, still partnering with the school, but in our own facility, where the kids are having more access to more activities and things like that, and just a space that is, again, still secure and reliable, but isn't within the school itself, and, you know, very minimized, that's super influential to us in our goal to increase who we can service. In addition, it would also help us currently, because as of right now, while we serve pre-K through 6th grade, our limit is to five-year-olds. We cannot service four-year-olds, which is pretty influential to who we are able to service. We have four-year-olds that are in preschool, so with the increase in space and being able to also increase our workforce, that would allow us to implement four-year-olds into our program. Okay, so the cost currently for the building, and in front of you is the diagram of what the building would look like, the current blueprint, is about $1.5 million, and so we're going to budget for around $2 million. Currently, we are in the works of working with the Lilly Grant to get about $300,000 from them, between $300,000 and $600,000, to put towards this building, as well as our partnering with the schools, like Karen mentioned, to have a matching cost of $300,000 from the school corporation, as well as the lease to the building, to create this. And with the hopes of being able to start building between January and February of 2025, hopefully opening in fall of 2025 with the school itself, so that we wouldn't be in the building anymore, and we would be still onsite, but with our own brand-new facility accessible to us.
Yep, any questions?
Where would, where would the facility be located at?
So the current plan is to, as we have just had a new playground built between the north and south end of the building, on the west side of the elementary school, that has given us the ability to put this building, hopefully, where the old playground was, so on the northwest side of the building, so adjacent to the full field that we have currently. So we placed there so that the kids would also be able to easily walk from the elementary school itself directly into the new facility. It would be maybe within 100 feet of the building itself.
They're on the elementary campus, just, just south of the Methodist Church there, basically?
Correct.
All right, any other questions from the council?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dean Myers, Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Marshall County. We have proposed joining with Elkhart County and St. Joe County to provide one requested amount. We have been fortunate, I want to back up, though, and say that maybe four years ago, we were able, before the pandemic, we were able to secure a grant from Indiana Housing Community Development Authority for $1,007,000 to build 10 houses, and those were going to be built in Bourbon, Plymouth, and Argus. Of course, the pandemic hit, and we couldn't, the, our program that we're proposing is contract building, not the traditional Habitat Homes, and we were not able to find contractors that would meet the inflationary cost of construction, so therefore, we had to turn down the grant. We're fortunate recently to have been, received a donation from the Delp family of the remainder of the Nylie River subdivision, which is east on Baker Street and across from Riverside School. We're in the process of defining boundaries and doing a number of things, replating it, so that we can have at least 12 building lots in that site. It has been designed both for mixed, commercial and residential. So we're proposing that we have 12 building lots. We've had to do some lot, building lot training or trading, and some boundary issues that have occurred, so we're resolving those, and the next step will be go to Plymouth's technical review team with our plan to replat it, and then order the replating. We then, again, hope to reapply to Indiana Housing Community Development Authority for a similar type of lot, the grant that we had before, and we feel since we were successful then, we could be successful now. Our local habitat is financially sound. We build a house a year, and the success of that has come from the Restor that provides funds for us to build at least one house a year. And that's not enough, and we want to be able to develop this subdivision and working with, it's been a very rewarding experience working with St. Joe and Elkhart County in their process of taking a mobile home park and clearing it and building homes and a farmland that has to have filled in Elkhart County. And meeting with them periodically has been a good experience for the Marshall County affiliate. We're going to, again, try for the grant for Indiana Housing Community Development Authority, and so far, this habitat in Marshall County has been successful in building 27 homes throughout Marshall County, and we've never had a foreclosure, and we think that's remarkable. Any questions?
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Dean, you've done a great job. We really appreciate you and all the work you put in. I know you put in lots of hours, but we also see the benefits of that as the people are moving into a house for the first time they've never had housing, but our hats are off to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Anna Kitzman, and I'm the President of the Heartland Arts Center. I'm just going to move this along here. I'm excited to be here to talk to you about our READY 2.0 project this morning. I'd like to just take a minute to paint a little picture of Heartland's history very briefly, and then what we do, who we are, and then I will delve into some of the READY 2.0 project details. So Heartland began in the late 1970s as a small group of local artists coming together to network and support one another's work, but over the past 40 years, they've expanded, they formed a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and moved into their first permanent gallery space in 2013 at 101 North Michigan Street in downtown Plymouth. Over the last 11 years, Heartland has experienced incredible growth, and the demand for programming resulted in the bold and transformative move into the historic Montgomery Ward Building in March of 2024. We are an all-volunteer arts organization, consisting of approximately 150 members, half of which are displaying artists, and half of which are patrons who support our mission and our programs. We're probably best known for our gallery space, showcasing the works of our member artists who display their multimedia works year-round. We also display the works of nine monthly featured artists who stem from the region and surrounding states. For example, our current featured artist for the month of August hails from Owensboro, Kentucky. In March, the gallery is overflowing with works of Marshall County's K-12 students for the annual Youth Art Month exhibit, and though now we have the space to feature our young creatives in our Creative Kids Corner. We host two juried exhibits in October and May, where hundreds of artists from five surrounding states are showcased to compete for awards. And we also offer numerous art classes and workshops that are available to nearly all ages. 10th anniversary and continue to attract thousands of visitors from across the state. And we have begun hosting live music and stage performances, as well as dance classes, yoga classes, meeting spaces. We partner with many organizations to provide arts experiences to the community, such as with the Marshall County Museum. And then we also partner with regional arts organizations, such as the South Bend Museum of Art, the Midwest Museum of American Art, and ACHART. And additionally, we have a growing public art program. Currently, we are installing a mural for our friends at the Bremen Arts Collective. So as you can see, we have a longstanding tradition for fostering artistic talent and the arts experience within and outside the local community. So over the past 40 years, Heartland has built an incredible arts organization and have evolved into something more than a gallery, more than a visual arts organization. But we are on the precipice of becoming a regional arts hub, serving not only Plymouth or Marshall County, but the region at large. So since our move in 2024, we have occupied the first floor of the Montgomery Ward Building, utilizing it for gallery and exhibition space, events, live music and performance, yoga and dance, and classes and workshops. But there is significant additional space available on the second floor, mezzanine and basement, to add to and enhance our programming. So our plans and goals for the building aim to transform the Montgomery Ward Building to serve as a regional arts hub, expand our educational arts programming, including the introduction of new classes and programs, as well as entrepreneurship workspaces and digital video production studio. And as a broader goal, foster community connection and quality of place as a catalyst for downtown revitalization and building a more robust creative arts economy. So a little history about the building. The historic Montgomery Ward Building has rich historical significance to the cultural heritage of Plymouth. Opening in 1929, it became the country's second brick-and-mortar location of the Montgomery Ward Department Store and served as the architectural model for Montgomery Ward Buildings across the United States. The building's history and prime location provide an exceptional opportunity to enhance the Plymouth downtown area, revitalize an underutilized property, and foster the creative market impacting artists and communities within and around the region. So just as a little walkthrough of our plan here, the first floor, as I said before, we occupy the first floor of the building, utilizing that mainly for our classrooms, gallery space, and so on and so forth. And if I actually jump ahead here, you can see better the 3D rendering and schematics of what our current plans look like. So the first floor would actually expand the exhibition space, but also add in a sensory room, a digital video studio, and a coffee bar or coffee lounge area. The mezzanine would consist of rental spaces. Office and entrepreneurship workspaces would occupy this area, and the front mezzanine would serve as a lounge area or another gathering space during events happening on the second floor. So the second floor is expansive, it's another 7,000 square feet, which offers a multitude of opportunities. These drawings feature tables and chairs set up for an event, but it can also be used for additional exhibition space, traveling exhibits, dance, other classes, you name it. The back portion of the second floor illustrates an artist-in-residence apartment, so this could offer the potential to attract top-notch artists from across the United States and beyond. The basement, its additional 7,000 square feet provide ample space to carry out arts education programming. A ceramic studio, glass studio, workshop, metal, traditional 2D classrooms, extra gallery space, and art studio rentals would help carry out the educational programming needs. So our timeline would be to begin in 2025. We would complete the project by 2028. And just some, our basic outcomes would include increased capacity to cement the Heartland Art Center as a premier artistic hub and venue space in the South Bend-Achart region. We anticipate significant increase in classes and workshops, exhibitions and events, and we project further increases in participation and attraction of artists and folks from surrounding communities. Along with our partners at the Rees, the Royal Rose Moon, the Marshall County Museum, these opportunities will make Marshall County, Plymouth, an attractive destination for tourists, bolstering our regional reputation not only as a top-notch arts community, but as an arts leader in the region. So, any questions?
It's a beautiful building. I looked at it once. I think it's a perfect spot for you guys. Obviously, you acquired it. It's exciting.
Thank you. I encourage you to come by and visit. Let me know. Any other questions?
And I would say you may not have the answer to this question right now, but with all of the projects that are going on in downtown Plymouth, what does parking look like for you guys down there?
Like for us specifically at Heartland, or just in general in Plymouth?
I mean, if you look at, you know, doing large events and down the road, you know, are there any plans in place? Because I could see that that might be an issue.
Well, I'm sure that Jeff could probably speak a little further to it than I can, but the Water Street Apartments will change that rear parking lot behind us, and we plan to change that rear entryway too, to allow for any parking and anybody utilizing that space along Water Street and in that area to enter into Heartland from the back door. So we wouldn't just only be, there would be open, you know, obviously some versatility there.
Good deal. All right. Any other questions for the council?
I got a quick question.
Yeah.
You guys own the building now, correct?
We are in the process of getting financing for the building, but we have, it is part of the agreement to purchase it by the end of 2024.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
And I will say that I was expecting this to be about a half hour, 45-minute meeting, and we are now an hour in. So to respect the schedule of county staff, let's try to keep this to another 15 minutes, so.
We're nearing the end, and I'll go quick. If you don't mind, I'll address your question about parking in downtown Plymouth. So it's interesting, it's always a hot topic when we talk about parking, and the impression is that along Michigan Street, parking can be a challenge. In reality, MACOG did a study a few years ago, and what it showed us is that within the entire downtown area, during the peak times, when the most parking is being utilized, we still only use about 54% of the available on-street and off-street parking downtown. The perception is that Michigan Street fills up and there's no parking. The reality is that if you go a half-block or a block off Michigan Street, there is ample parking and multiple parking lots. You may just have to walk around the corner to get where you're going. And I think you'll see that if you go to events at the Rees Theater, you'll see that there's parking, block to the west, a block to the east, there's more parking another block off to the north, that there is plenty available.
Very cool.
So the next project is the Plymouth Housing Project, and this is a project spanning two different sites in the city of Plymouth to add a mix of housing types across those sites. You can see the breakdown here. It's little over 100 total units that are a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, two-bedroom duplexes, and then single-family traditional-style housing. It also includes about 4,500 square feet of commercial space and a community center and part of the development. The first site is at the corner of Liberty and Pennsylvania, which is the, there was a water factory and then warehouses there that burned down, I think it's been almost 20 years ago, that that structure burnt down, and it's been vacant since then. There's been a lot of discussion about possible development. We think this is the best use for that space. In that development, you'll see the blue roofs in that rendering show the new construction. And the very top-left corner is the mixed-use building. There would be commercial space on the ground floor with apartments above. And then around the outside on Pennsylvania and Liberty Streets, there are about nine single-family houses. These are traditional, single-family, one-, two-story houses. Within that, then, is a pocket neighborhood, which is a little different concept for our area, but it's becoming very popular. Those are duplexes that are oriented toward a center common space. They're not tiny homes, but they're a little smaller than a typical home, and they really appeal to retirees who are looking to downsize, as well as younger residents who are getting started, need a place to start. That central orientation creates more of a community atmosphere, and then the community shared space allows them to have events and other activities to create a real sense of community. And then on the west side of Liberty Street is a proposed multifamily building, probably a courtyard-style apartment building that would add an additional 24 apartment units within that space. Working closely with SRKM Architects and Brent Martin, who's been a real driving force in this project, and River Valley Construction Group out of St. Joseph County, they've actually indicated that if this project goes forward and is successful with ready funding, they could possibly pull all of their crews from the work they're doing in South Bend and focus entirely on Plymouth and Marshall County development, both for this project and going forward. The other site is farther south along Lemler and, I'm sorry, Bayless and Angel Streets. And this actually shows a larger diagram. I'm going to repeat some of the things that Tony Wagner said about Bremen. Plymouth also incorporated this into a master plan for the area, and Plymouth adopted a new comprehensive plan at the end of 2023, identifying areas for future growth for the city. I don't think that any of us will see this fully developed in our lifetimes, but we have to plan ahead so we know, as the city grows, where that growth can and should happen. So this diagram indicates the larger area that is potential future growth, and this development will really unlock that potential. Planning ahead for that so that as we add infrastructure, that we're accommodating that future growth, putting in things like sewer lines and water lines and street access, that we know that we're not going to have to redo that in the future, that we're already prepared for that growth. Specific to this ready project is this area of that diagram. And actually, you can see over on the left side of that area indicated are the orange rectangles along, again, Bayless and Angel Streets. This is that area, flip 90 degrees to fit on the slide, but it represents 40 single-family homes that would be built in that area. These would be traditional construction, detached, single-family homes, that if you know anything about the housing market right now, are extremely expensive, really cost-prohibitive to build. So the goal of this project is to add the typical traditional housing at a price point that makes it approachable for the average resident. So the goal is to target an income range of 80% to 120% of AMI. That's your area median income. So that's your average resident. That's your neighbors and probably most of us in a traditional house. But the project also includes a mix of rental, single-family, multifamily, and duplex units. If you've been paying attention to the housing study that was just completed by United Way, you'll know that Marshall County has a very unique demographic makeup. Instead of the normal demographic curve that shows larger baby boomer and millennial populations with reduced cohorts of other generations, we actually show a very straight line in that graph. We have a larger, the normal number of Gen Xers and a larger, the normal number of Gen Z, and that puts extreme pressure on our housing market, and it also creates a much higher-than-normal demand for rental units. So we tried to create a mix of housing units in this development that would meet all of those needs for the city and the county going forward. We also understand the benefits that, studies show us that there's an estimated benefit of over $90,000 for each person who moves to the community over the course of a year. And that extrapolated out, that's over $7.5 million per year. Over a five-year period, almost $38 million in economic benefit to the community by adding that housing and attracting new residents. And of course, the other economic benefits of construction employment, retaining residents who are looking for housing, and attracting new employers and new residents. And of course, the benefits, as was talked about in Bremen, the benefit to our schools because of the way school funding works now, they need pupils to give money. And the more houses we have, the more families can move here, the more students we can provide to the school corporations. So again, that's a very quick overview of the Plymouth Housing Project. We're excited about the partnerships we're developing, the potential for both this project and future growth in the city. I'm also going to speak about the Culver Exchange Project because unfortunately, none of those project champions could be here today. I think they're all out of town for various reasons. The Culver Exchange Project is a project to revitalize Culver's main streets and to specifically take an underutilized building, the Culver Exchange Bank Building, and convert it to a mixed-use that will support their further development. As was mentioned, with the Culver Youth Club, they have 300 and some, 400, I don't remember the number of, new houses that are already starting construction. So they're expecting a large population increase based on that, and this is a way to catalyze some of the downtown development to serve those residents, adding both, again, more residential units, but also commercial space. I will be honest, I'm not familiar with the details of this project. I only have the overview, so I'm not going to give you a lot of information on these slides, but you have them there in the presentation, and you can review them. I'm sure that Lee Marshall or Marty Osterbahn would be happy to answer any questions you might have about that project.
And I will tell you, about two weeks ago, I spent about an hour with Lee talking about her project, and I'm glad that I was able to. I think this project probably wouldn't be a good fit in a lot of our communities, but in Culver, it makes a lot of sense. They're talking about doing some commercial space on the ground floor, which would include Culver Town Hall, possibly the Township Trustees' Office and some retail space. They definitely need more space for a town hall in Culver. And then the second floor would be four high-end condominiums, which, like I said, in a lot of our municipalities, wouldn't make a lot of sense, but those would sell quickly in Culver and help address one of their main challenges, which is occupancy. You know, the seasonality of the Culver economy makes setting up a retail space in downtown Culver not, you know, not very doable, but this type of residential would be beneficial in Culver, so.
Well, and I'm glad you explained it that way, because I think that's a common theme across these projects. Each one is really customized to the specific community and the needs of that community, but at the same time, you can see collaboration, both within those communities and across the county. And really, just the fact that we are here presenting all these projects in one presentation, I hope demonstrates the level of collaboration we've been able to achieve across the county with the various partners involved. The last thing that we'd like to speak about this morning is technically not a ready project, but it's very complimentary, and again, in the spirit of collaboration, this is the Gift Aid Community Leadership Proposal, and Lynda Yoder can explain that.
All right. Good morning, Lynda.
Good morning. My name is Lynda Yoder, and I'm the director for the Marshall County Community Foundation and United Way of Marshall County. So thank you for your time this morning. I will keep this brief, but as Jeff said, this is a complementary project, and it is unique to community foundations. So since community foundations really took off in Indiana in about 1990, 1991, Lilly Endowment has been very supportive of the growth and development in each community of the community foundation, because it's their way to invest in the community with local voice. It's important to them that local people have an opportunity to decide what's most important for their communities and to direct that growth. So we've been pleased to be a proud partner with Lilly Endowment. I will keep this brief, but as Jeff said, this is a complimentary project, and it is unique to community foundations. So since community foundations really took off in Indiana in about 1990, 1991, Lilly Endowment has been very supportive of the growth and development in each community of the community foundation, because it's their way to invest in the community with local voice. It's important to them that local people have an opportunity to decide what's most important for their communities and to direct that growth. So we've been pleased to be a proud partner with Lilly Endowment. When they talk about a gift initiative, it stands for Giving Indiana Funds for Tomorrow. That's unique to the community foundation's support from Lilly Endowment. And as you can see, this is the eighth round, so that, that means that there's been millions of dollars over the years put into community foundations, and this is the next evolution of that. So what they gave us the opportunity to do is a community leadership component. There are several components with Gift Aid, several ways that they are investing in the community, but the one we wanted to talk to you about today is the Community Leadership Proposal. This is one that we have, we've had an opportunity to do community leadership grants before, and we lean on our partners with one Marshall County formerly Crossroads to help us understand what the most critical needs are and how to address those and what, what we might do with this opportunity. Housing. Jeff mentioned housing. You've talked about several projects this morning. We know that that's a critical need in the community, and so bottom line is, we've got an opportunity to apply for up to $5 million for a local community leadership grant, and our local grant will focus on catalyzing housing projects. And we want to do that by, by launching a Community Development Commission that would be strictly focused on housing and how, how we might build our capacity to support the types of projects that you've heard about this morning and others as well. The rest of the, that's $1 million that would be used for that over a five-year period. And then the rest of the funding, the $4 million would be used to set up a revolving loan fund, a housing fund. And again, with the goal of addressing some of the things that we've identified, abandoned properties and, and, you know, infill, infill projects, that kind of thing, catalyzing homeownership, all of those kinds of things are on the table as far as what we might be looking at to support with the, with this, with this grant if it's approved. At the regional level, we had the opportunity as well to partner with a region and submit a proposal, and it's based, it's all based on population, so our partners were important in that one. And because we have such a strong relationship with Elkhart and St. Joseph County through the South Bend, Elkhart Regional Partnership, that's the reason that we chose to partner with them again for a $20 million proposal that is also focused on housing. And what we would do with that is we would capitalize on the opportunity to work with MACOG and the South Bend Partnership, to set up a land trust and a housing trust, and really develop and, and take advantage of their expertise in being partners with them in that proposal as well. Just to set the stage, it's highly competitive. They have originally set aside $65 million for this particular round of funding through Gift Aid. And we know that even just across the upper region of, of Indiana, there are three regions that every one of them have applied for 20 million, and that's just the northern part of the state. So we do have reason to believe that they will expand the pot of money that may be available to support these projects, but it really will depend on the quality of the project. And, and we can tell you, there were 90 applications that were submitted to Lilly Endowment, and 50 of those moved to Stage Two, including our local and our regional application. And the, the feedback that we received in a Stage Two review was pretty positive. So what we'll ask you to do is, you know, we're asking the county to just, if you could work with us to support this concept going forward. There's a lot of details that will be worked out later on, but really, what we're wanting to do is make sure that we've got tools available to our local